This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening, welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Education Meeting for Tuesday, May 28th, 2024. This meeting is called to order. I am happy once again to say that we will begin the meeting with Brighton Believer Awards.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We're very excited that the Brighton Believers Council has once again approved nominees to receive Brighton Believers Awards. These are folks that have demonstrated the character traits of integrity, respect, responsibility, kindness, and self-control. The award winners are members of our community, students, teachers, staff members, parents, coaches, and the nomination form. Of course, we remind people is on the website at bcsd.org backslash believer. We love to recognize deserving members of our community like we will tonight. And the first person being recognized, we're very honored to have in attendance Vivian Beedenkopf. Vivian, if you can come on up. And Kathleen Degoye, did Kathleen, oh Kathleen, come on up. Kathleen nominated. Kathleen is Brighton's TIES Coordinator and nominated Vivian. She wrote, Vivian exemplifies the tenants of a Brighton graduate and Brighton believer. TIES, together including every student, promotes inclusion and equity. She volunteers with students with developmental disabilities, ages eight to 21 plus, to allow them to participate in school and community events with natural peer support. Vivian guides and safeguards our young participants, creating a fun, safe, and inclusive environment for them. She treats each of our TIES participants with respect and kindness, embracing the TIES mission. She actively recruits new TIES volunteers. Beyond TIES, Vivian is responsible for creating and/or supporting a myriad of community-based services. Vivian volunteered with the summer 2023 I Can Bike Camp of Autism Up, helping children with challenges learn to ride a bike independently. A member of the Brighton Crew Club Crew Team since ninth grade, Vivian created an introduction to youth throwing, a pilot project with the Rochester City School District. Vivian founded the Teen Health Education and Accessibility Program, Period Poverty and Health Equity. Working directly with Brighton administrators and teachers, Vivian's program advocates for access to free period products in schools. Vivian introduced the in-school peer-to-peer mentorship program at Brighton High School. She identified academic needs, sought advisor support, and launched a free accessible student-based tutoring program. Vivian recruited and onboarded tutors for this program. Vivian is a steward of earth, promoting respect and responsibility for our planet through her work with Outward Bound International and the BHS Outdoor Leadership Club. This information is just a sampling of the incredible work of Vivian Beedenkopf. Just a sample. I don't think there's enough hours in the day to do anymore. She is intuitive and perceptive. She identifies a problem and tackles it, making the Brighton Central School District the town of Brighton and beyond, a more equitable, respectful, responsible, and inclusive community. Vivian works so hard and so quietly, but her selfless work speaks to her great sense of connection to community and commitment to making the Brighton community even better. Congratulations and thank you very much. Next up is a, an incredible group of people which we were reminded of, we're reminded every day, but especially today. The Brighton Crossing Guards, who are every single day so attentive to the needs of our kids, but today when we had power out and traffic lights out, you know, I witnessed firsthand, as I often do in the morning, their work, but to everybody here and to those watching, if you drove through 12 Corners today, which is treacherous enough on a good day, with traffic lights working, four-way stop, which to some people means no stop, often, and multiple accidents in the area, this group of individuals kept our kids safe and journeying on without incident. So, can't tell you how much we appreciate that work. This group was nominated by substitute teacher Joanne Katzman. I'm going to read all of them who are here, and I'm going to ask the gentlemen who are here representing if they'd like to come up as well, to receive their certificate and represent the entire group. But the whole group is Christine Casbaris, Christine here? Christine, come on up. Robert Cohen. Tom Lyons. Edward McGee, I think is here. Edward, come on up. Sharon Hurlberg. Okay. Mary Bear. Barbara Lyons. Stacy Ward. Constance Dinkins. I don't think Constance is here. Nancy Brongo. And Michelle Shimott. Joan wrote, I nominate the 12 Corners Crossing Guards for the award. Yes, all of the Crossing Guards. Mary Bear is one of the exceptional Crossing Guards. When she sees me, she greets me by name and treats me like she's thrilled to see me. The gentleman at the corner of Wynton and Elmwood is also super friendly every time I cross that intersection, as is the woman at the corner of Wynton and Monroe. Also, I don't want to leave out the woman at the spotlight between, a stoplight between TCMS and BHS on Wynton. Overall, I feel when I cross the streets of 12 Corners or in front of BHS and TCMS at the beginning or end of the school day, the Crossing Guards are upbeat and friendly, and they put me in a good mood. They all seem to have such positive attitudes, and let's not forget what they do, which is stand in the middle of the road, literally, so students and other pedestrians can cross the street safely. And again, today, standing in the middle of the road with no traffic devices whatsoever. I nominate all of the Crossing Guards because I can't choose just one. They all seem to be positive and friendly. While Joanne has experience with our Crossing Guard stationed at 12 Corners, we want to recognize every Crossing Guard in the district who help our students get to all of our schools safely and are a friendly face to everyone who walks through the crosswalks. Thank you again very much. Sandy Helman. Sandy, come on up. And is Julie Angellon here? Okay. Sandy was nominated by Julie Angellon. She's joined up nearby by Dr. Hall. She wrote, 17 years ago today, my son Jonathan B. Angellon passed away from cancer. He had just graduated from Brighton High School after an amazing high school career and experience. Since 2006, the Jonathan B. Angellon Foundation has awarded close to 60 college scholarships to Brighton High School students between the Jonathan B. Angellon Award for Excellence for the general school population and the Jonathan B. Angellon Strength of the Pack Award for football players. At the forefront of the Jonathan B. Angellon Award for Excellence, recruitment, selection, coordination, and delivery has been the very kind, patient, hardworking, committed, and wonderful Sandy Helman, and we would agree. Sandy has supported the facilitation of these awards for 17 years, which has been especially important since I moved down south four years ago and had to ask her for additional assistance. Sandy Helman embodies the attributes required for the Brighton Believers Award tenfold: integrity, respect, responsibility, and above all kindness. Quite truthfully, I cannot think of Sandy without tears in my eyes because of all that she has done at Brighton High School, because of how she felt about Jonathan, and all she has done for him through the facilitation of the Jonathan B. Angellon Awards. I also cannot think about her without recalling the quote by the author Maya Angelou. I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. Thank you, Sandy, for everything you have done on behalf of Jonathan and the students, parents, staff at Brighton High School. We are all very proud. Thank you, Sandy. Last but certainly, certainly not least, Jerry Law. Lou Alamo, can you come on up, please, to stand with this amazing former bus driver from Brighton? Jerry's a former bus driver for Brighton, nominated by parent and TCMS Math Academic Intervention Specialist Jen Perillo and parent Angela Shimkus. Jennifer and Angela, if you want to come on up, two, please. You bring anybody you would like. I think Jerry would say absolutely. Jennifer wrote, Mr. Jerry is the bus driver for the CRPS route through our neighborhood. From greeting the kids and parents each day with a smile and a "good morning, how are you?" to this kind, to his kind and gentle nature with our kids, Mr. Jerry truly is what it means to be a Brighton believer. As a bus driver, he is the start and end of our daughter's school day and carries the utmost responsibility of getting her to and from school safely. Words cannot express how much we are going to miss him. Mr. Jerry is the best and is so deserving of this award. Angelina wrote, Bus drivers can make a child's day. I truly believe this, but I never thought that my daughter's bus driver would make such an impact on our entire family's life. You see, Mr. Jerry has an amazing way about him of exuding kindness, patience, and thoughtfulness that makes you feel calmer about sending your most precious person off to school. We always felt safe knowing Mr. Jerry was keeping our oldest daughter, Aria, safe on the bus, and that is the biggest gift anyone could give a parent. Our Aria is very shy and quiet child in most situations, and despite our encouraging, would struggle to say good morning to Mr. Jerry each day. He would never make her feel badly about not saying hello and always gave her the kindest "good morning." Finally, after over a year of silence, she worked up a wave to each day, and the way Mr. Jerry celebrates and welcomes that wave means more than he will ever know. Then we got the most devastating news, that Mr. Jerry will no longer be their bus driver. He's truly one of a kind, more than words can describe. But more importantly, this amazing human who kept our kids safe each day was now dealing with his own challenges. To know that he has been dealing with all of this and still transporting our children with kindness, grace, and never missing a beat with his joyful "good morning" absolutely breaks my heart. He exemplifies perseverance in all ways. There's not a single person more deserving. My hope is for Mr. Jerry to know just how important he is, how many lives he's impacted, and that he has the entire Brighton community behind him, rooting for him to make it through health challenges and come back even stronger. And yes, I'm holding out so much hope that today will not be the last time he picks up my daughter for school and then we get to hear that "good morning, Aria." Thank you very much for the opportunity to welcome and recognize these amazing human beings, and thanks to everybody that came. Mr. Jerry, I hope you see that. Look at all these big fans you have here as well. How was Shar Evans? I know you like board meetings. You're welcome to stay if you'd like to. She's welcome to stay. There's a board meeting.
Dan, there's a suggestion from Christina that maybe Jerry does one with all the kids that are here.
There seem to be so many of them here for Mr. Jerry.
You can chase them down in the hall.
Chase them in the hall.
Maybe it's in the hallway.
Do we have seniors here for government?
They're required.
How are you? Congratulations.
Next on the agenda, we provide the opportunity at every meeting for public participation. I know we have at least one person here, Stephanie Tim, would like to make comments. Let's see you come to the podium. Our rules are, of course, you have three minutes, and we're happy to hear any feedback or answer any questions you might have.
First off, thank you for having me tonight. My name is Stephanie Tim, and I'm a parent in the community. Our child is a third-grade student at Council Rock Elementary School, finishing up his last and final year at Council Rock. As our motto states in Brighton Central Schools, "Every Child, Every Day, Every Way." Why does it feel like my husband and I, my child, is not part of that "every child"? In a recent CSE meeting, one of his service providers mentioned regression after one of the breaks we had. As parents, we do our job to practice and reinforce his goals at home. So why does this service provider not doing what she needs to do? In addition, "every child," why is our child not included in the first-ever yearbook of Council Rock? He was placed in the specialized classroom page, but him and other friends were not in the general ed class. We are also saddened to see his specialized teacher for the past two years in first and second grade and the other members of his 1214 class not included or even mentioned as not pictured in the faculty and staff section. At least our child's teacher acknowledged this mistake by stating she brought this up to the principal's attention. Yet, from what she notified us, she reported that Mr. Tappan was looking for ways to make the process more inclusive for next year. Well, next year, he's not, will not be at Council Rock. Next year, next week, when will students with children with disabilities be included? According to the IDA of 2004, a free, appropriate public education is available to all children with disabilities residing in the state between the ages of three and 21, inclusive, including children with disabilities who have suspended or expelled in accordance with 20 U.S.C. 1412A2, 34 CFR 300.109, 300.110. Also, according to New York State, the annual state application under Part B of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is amended in 2004 for fiscal, excuse me, for federal fiscal year 2024. I would like our money back for our child's yearbook, but more importantly, a written apology to the families and specialized staff of Council Rock who were affected by this overlook by administration. That is all.
First, thank you very much for coming. I'm certain that wasn't very easy for you. And thank you for sharing your thoughts honestly. On behalf of the board, and I know Dr. McGowan don't want to respond, but on behalf of the board, we're sorry for the experience that your child had that you just described. I do know, we did receive an update that there have been some actions taken, and I'll let Dr. McGowan speak to that, but we appreciate you taking the time to come in and give us that feedback.
Just echoing, and I don't want to diminish what you had to say because I think it's powerful and really important for us to acknowledge it, and I'm sorry that pain was caused. And I would love to sit down with you and talk more about that and talk more about the first issue you brought up with regard to a service provider and regression and talk through that conversation in that meeting. And you're absolutely right that the yearbook should have been more inclusive, and we will have to work on that and talk about potential solutions. But if you're, if you're up for it, I would love to sit down with you and talk more about that.
Yes, please. And also, I'm just wondering, follow-up question. Is there any way that I can make sure that the inclusivity is included in the yearbook next year for Council Rock as well as French Road where my son will be attending?
It will be. And so let's, you and I talk about that some more. I did, again, didn't want to diminish what you, what you had to say because it certainly feels not very inclusive right now, but I think because certainly this is broadcast to other people that may not have experiences with the district or may not have children here in the district yet, I wanted to make sure I reiterated that our goal is always complete and full inclusivity and equity for all children and families. And you didn't certainly feel that way or have that experience, and we want to work through that with you. So, we'll set up a time and get together, and I'd like to learn more about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public participation? Yes, you can get up and go right to the podium. And we'd ask that you just say your name, please.
Hi, how are you? My name is Crystal Ellis, and I have a son and daughter in the district. And so I wanted to comment on the same, and so on the yearbook. I understand that there are some feelings of not being included, and I want to lift that, knowing that that is important. And so we should never diminish how one feels about inclusion. I also want to say that while I don't have the same feelings and the same sentiments of feeling of, of my son being excluded from the yearbook, I do want to make sure that I'm here in support of everyone, knowing that with my experience with the district, I don't believe wholeheartedly that exclusion was on purpose, but I do believe that there are ways that we can get better at it. And so I want to lift you and say that I hear you, but I also want to lift the individuals within the district, knowing that we're doing the best that we can to be an inclusive district and walking alongside with members of the district for a very long time. That's something that I could say from my heart. And so, yes, I do believe that we should think about how we can become more inclusive in the future when we think about our rollout of things, but I know that we're doing the best that I, that we can. And at the end of the day, I'm just so proud of who we are. I'm so proud that she could get up and say how she feels about, you know, about what happened in the district, but I also know that our hearts are in it and that sometimes it's, a lot of times it's not on purpose, it's just oversight, and we're learning for the first time. And as we learn for the first time, we do better the next time. And that's all I have to include.
Thank you very much.
Crystal, thank you. I know we've also learned quite a bit, and you've been on the ride with us and a teacher of that, and want to reiterate again that that is who we are and who we strive to be. And I apologize, Stephanie, I know how important that is to Matt Tappan, to the staff there, to Deanna Spagnola, and we're all hearing you, and that is a focus for us. So, we'll sit down and love to have another conversation with you, and thank you.
Anyone else for participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. You all have received the agenda in advance. Any questions or comments with regards to tonight's agenda? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor? We also have approval for the minutes of the May 7th business meeting and also the May 21st Annual Meeting and Election. Any questions, comments, edits with regards to the May 7th meeting minutes? Motion, I'm sorry, and with regards to May 21st election results as well. Motion to approve?
For May 7th?
For both. I'm going to do both at the same time.
It was absent, May 21st, so I'm not going to do it.
That's okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther. All those in favor? Principal reports. I know that we are not going to get one from French Road tonight because both Colleen and Shirley are at the Red Wings game, hopefully not getting rained on. It looked dark out, but hopefully they're not getting rained on, so I hope we're having fun. It was a doubleheader, and they were going to, musical performance between the two games is the...
Yes, they were singing the National Anthem and performing, otherwise performing. If there's any other aspects of the performance, but yes.
All right. So with no French Road, we'll proceed directly to TCMS. I'm sorry, once I see one up there, I pick away from that, so just note.
Alrighty, well, it was a day at TCMS today. I feel like I, I'm not sure I have much in my head to talk about today, but, no, it was, it was a pretty day.
Really? Just, just for the record, what happened today?
Just for the record today, so we started the day coming back just after a long weekend, which in and of itself, you know, we're all getting back to routine, and then we lost power, and then the fire alarm went off, and then we were allowed back in the building, but then we weren't allowed back in the building, so we had to come back out of the building, then we came back in the building. Everybody was safe. Everybody was great. Everybody pitched in. Everybody was flexible. I couldn't say more about the students and the staff in the building. I've said this a million times today, but I want to say it here so that everybody can hear it. Our food services folks were hands down the absolute heroes of the day. What I saw them doing, because nothing on the line could keep things warm, so they were bringing things back into the kitchen, heating it on the stove, bringing it out for sixth grade lunch, feeding all the kids, then bringing it back into the kitchen to warm it up, then bringing it back out to feed the seventh grade kids. They made sure every student had food because goodness knows that the microwaves didn't work for all the ramen that needed to be eaten. So everybody got food that wanted it, and they were just amazing, and like they didn't miss a beat, all while the kitchen itself was kind of dark, too. So, I just, more than anybody else, they were amazing. So if you get a chance to see any of them, please thank them. I know that was just my building, but in the other buildings, it was just as much to feed 800 kids. So anyway, it was a great day. We still don't have power right now, but we're going to get it tonight. I'm confident in that. And I will tell you about May. So we started with the Spanish trip to New York City. The picture of the seagull eating pizza is actually my favorite. That was an excitement for all of the kids, but they did the typical things, all in great fashion. They started with salsa dancing, they went to Spanish Harlem, they went to the Met, they went to Ellis Island. Almost 90 students went, and they had a great trip. Thankfully, very uneventful, really good weather, and like I always say about these trips, I wish they could be earlier in the year because there's so much bonding that happens on them. So great trip that Mrs. Morgan organized again this year. We also had teacher appreciation this week, and the PTSA at TCMS killed it. They did a whole Friends theme for our staff, and each day they had different goodies for them. They had candy one day and snacks. They did a full lunch another day, coffee and sweets on another day, and then they had these awesome care packages with like facial masks and lotions and just really, really nice work that they did. All of our staff, we also, Betsy, Sean, and I gave all of our staff a little Bruin lanyard to put on their own lanyard, which was super cool. And then we played a game. Every day, there was a game that teachers could play, and if they answered the questions and turned it in, they got a card. And whoever had the best poker hand at the end of the week from the cards that they earned, earned a gift. So it was a nice little competition, just a lot of fun to kind of lighten things up at the end of the year. So it was great. The kids were... The kids were super awesome, sharing little notes to teachers of thanks unprompted, and that was really nice to see, too. Of course, we had our annual Lilac Festival that the jazz band went out to and kind of ducked in between the raindrops, but they did another awesome job. So that was exciting. Lots of smiles on the kids' faces this year. We had two activity nights in May. We had the sixth grade activity night, which was a neon night, and then we had the seventh grade activity night where, thanks Dr. Hall for lending us the Bruin. I know you're pretty tight with that, but we appreciate that. And we had another mascot from the ice cream place that came out for seventh grade. And sometimes you think seventh graders are too cool for that. They actually really loved it. So it was, it was pretty awesome. And that kind of wraps up our activity nights for the year. Crazy to think about. We've got the Bonfire in a couple of weeks for eighth graders, but otherwise, they're all finished. We had One World Goods come in, folks from One World Goods, to talk to students in Mrs. Kansas' classes and Mrs. Falter's classes about fair trade. And they came in on two different occasions to share some items with students and talk about kind of the entire process of getting them from where they're originated to here and all that goes into the concept of something being fair trade. You might know the one girl in the bottom left. I don't know. We also had our environmental club brought in Mrs. Kugel, who works with these climate action kits. They're for coding, and the kids coded smart irrigation systems, which is so nice. I know to see all the girls involved in the coding and STEM, sometimes we don't get as many girls involved as we would like. So it was really nice that this was, it was a group of girls. We also had our Brighton Clean Sweep a few weeks ago, two weeks ago now, and we had probably about 10 or 12 students that went to three different locations. The pond, the little river area is always a hit. I don't know why. It's hard to get them out of there, but they do like that area. And then, of course, the swings for sure. We also are wrapping up Asian American and Pacific Islander History Month between curricular activities that students have done in classes and different visual presentations throughout the building. We've had daily morning show segments highlighting different individuals. We've had emails that have gone out to students two times a week about something related to AAPI Month. And then last Friday, we also had a speaker come in from MDA Space, and she talked about her position and her role in the organization. And we had quite a few kids that came during, they didn't volunteer. They signed up to come and were able to ask her questions and listen to her job. So that was exciting. And then on Friday, Ms. Padilla is wrapping the month up with a lit in the library. So lots going on this month. We also had our talent show last week. We had our first ever balancing act. That's one of those long pool, you know, like skimmer rods. Yeah, it was pretty insane. And we had some great musical talents. Our kids can sing and they can play. Holy cow. It was really neat. So lots of fun there. And then just some other things, taking advantage of the nice weather, taking math outside and using chalk and working through some math problems outside. We had our assembly on Friday for the entire school, sixth and seventh graders in the gym, eighth graders in the auditorium, to learn about sports activities for the fall and also performing arts activities. So play, tryouts, summer performing arts, things like that. Dr. Glazer came over to talk about that as well. We brought some TCMS students over to FRES on Thursday to talk with all of the fifth graders to get them ready for the transition, five go six. And then starting today, we had some high schoolers come over to us to talk to our eighth graders about the transition, eight go nine. We'll have two more sets of students coming over later this week to talk to the rest of the eighth graders. And then Larry Meek came over last week, and he is a retired composer. Our seventh grade students performed one of his pieces earlier in the school year at a concert, and they're performing one of his pieces this spring. I think it's this week, right? This week. So it was super neat to have him be there conducting and giving them feedback on his piece that they were performing. And I think he said he was 73. He had the most energy I've ever seen of any 73-year-old. He was putting all of the seventh graders in the band to shame. Like, he was like, come on, you're not keeping up with me. Let's go. But they, they kind of hung on his every single word, and it was, it was really cool to see that. And then we've got a lot going on the end of the year. We're finishing up math testing tomorrow, which is always a student favorite. We've got orchestra concerts this week. We've got the Five Go Six Activity Night on Friday. Algebra Regents is nice and early for the new Regents exam, so that's next week. And we have our band concerts next week, the Bonfire coming up on the 8th. We have our Schools to Watch Celebration in our building on the 14th to celebrate our seventh redesignation. And we have our play, our straight play led by Mr. McCarty that somebody may have a cameo in, so you may want to go and see it. Senior Parade, everybody's excited for the senior parade. Regents exams, Seabreeze Trip on the last day. So lots going on between now and the last day, but all really, really good, exciting stuff.
Thank you to you and your entire team for what you sort of had to get through today. Thank you to the kids, obviously, for what they were willing to do. And I appreciate very much your shout out to Nicole's team. They're very kind, and everybody was scrambling, but as you said, I think when you started, everybody was safe. Everybody was where they were supposed to be, and we got it done. So thank you and everybody for all your work to get that done today. It wasn't the day you imagined when you arrived at school, certainly.
Okay, never is, right?
Principal Tappin?
All right. So we didn't have it quite as bad as 12 Corners Middle School. However, it was a challenge, and I think I answered. For some reason, they thought I would know when the power was coming back on. So I think I answered that question about 100 times. Mr. Tappin, when will it be back on? I said, I wish I knew. But you do know. When is it coming back? I said, I don't know. I don't know. I did take a picture in our electric closet, which is run all the data closet and keeps an air conditioner. We use that as a charging station and to cool off because heat was actually pumping out into my office. So I don't know what that was. But again, I will give a huge shout out to the entire cafeteria staff, Nicole, Van Damme. The only thing our kids could not order today that was not on the regular menu was grilled cheese, and it's because we couldn't light the ovens. Everything else was served just as it was. And the kids did a great job dealing without the grilled cheese. So, but they really came together. They were making sandwiches between each lunch, picking what was most popular. Was it peanut butter and jelly? Was it tuna, or was it tuna fish, or was it turkey and cheese? So they were amazing, and it was great to team with them today. So, so we've had a lot going on in May as well. Our bike and walk to school week was celebrated. Again, pictorial evidence that Dr. Hall is a sharer. He shared, he shared the Bruin, who greeted kids on our Friday. And again, huge shout out to Coach Krieger and Christian Cooper, who helped to organize that along with our wellness team and getting kids there. And I think the best part of that is watching how it has encouraged people to continue to walk and bike to school. With the weather, the weather helps, but having that kind of kickoff to it gives people that permission, and it's great to watch kids coming in with their families. So we also celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week. Last week, the PTSA threw us an amazing Hawaiian-themed luncheon on the half-day, but Ms. Schaefer and I kicked it up a notch this year. Talk About Awesome was our theme, so we did nacho chips. We did coffee and donuts. We did chips and salsa. We did surprises for them all throughout the week. It was really great to be able to give back to them, watching what they give all the time. So we were really happy to be able to do that. Celebrations happen at the beginning of May. I would love to be like on the council that decides to spread those out because they all come like rapid fire. But we also celebrated our nurses, loving our school nurses. They are an incredible team who cares so much about our kids and work every day. So a lot of cards and thanks were given back to them as well, which is so nice for them to feel that love. We gave back to our volunteers. We have so many amazing volunteers through the PTSA. So to our building chairs, who have served some of them for two or three years and are moving on. And one of our great traditions at Council Rock that we love to do is all of our chairs for the events. So we have all kinds of events throughout the year. They have a book donated to our library and have a plate in the inside of that book that says it's donated in their honor and which, which building program that they chaired, and then it stays in there as kind of a forever thank you for, to be recognized as time goes on. So we're happy to continue that tradition. Our second graders, led really by Liz Porta, but the entire second grade team are finishing up their final wit and wisdom. So you've heard that talked about a lot, the rigor that goes with it, all the amazing things. But the connection that they made was stone soup. And as a class, they brainstormed what they might be able to do because really they've been reading and analyzing the different variations of stone soup, and then learning about how food nourishes our body, but also can also nourish our community. So they had someone come in from the Brighton Food Cover to talk about what that is, and are doing a collection through today. We collected and will be donating that, and hopefully, well, not this, because I think this is our last report, but I'll give you an update as we go on. They collected a lot of foods to donate, and it was a great project, again, driven by the kids and what they thought that we could do. So our second graders are also in social studies, learning right now about Brighton history. So our town historian, Mary Jo Lamphier, was invited to come. She did three different presentations to small groups to talk about the history of Brighton, landmarks within Brighton, and answer any questions for the kids about Brighton and how it's contributed to the areas around us and how it's developed. So. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight was field trips galore. So these are just opportunities that our kids have. So these are first graders who went to the planetarium. This ties directly to their science unit about how light and dark are connected and how that happens. So they got to go see a planetarium show and some great pictures of kids enjoying the planetarium. We had a lot of kids who had never been to the planetarium before, and they were in awe of what it offered. Our kindergartners, connected to also their science unit, had the Zoo Mobile come to visit in kindergarten. It was sad, but I was sick for the day that this snake came out. So, but the kids were like amazed at what they were able to observe with the Zoo Mobile. And then our second graders, actually earlier in the year, so this isn't quite this spring, went to the JCC to see a Tykes play and be exposed to the theater world, and it connected again directly to units that they were studying in the wit and wisdom, which was perfect. And then our kindergartners are heading either to Highland Park or Mendon Pond. Some of them haven't been yet, but our Mendon Ponds is new, and it connects with a ferry unit that Andrea Yaman, our extended studies teacher, has been doing with the students all year. The Habits of Mind Ferry leaves notes about all the great things that they're doing. And then she actually even did a follow-up with them after they went to the Ferry Gardens in Mendon Ponds and the Ferry Houses, where they got to design their own. This is a design from one of our students up here in paint, one of our kindergartners. So we've got a lot packed up into the next like 25 days. So our second grade Bingo Night and Parent Information Night, I know if Colleen was here, she would have been promoting this as well, is next Tuesday, either at 5:15 or at 6:15. We've split our classes. And in the, in previous years, they've all come to listen to more adult kind of presentation, and then we took kids on tours. This way, kids are going separately, and they're going to play bingo and have a really good time while the adults hear some of the maybe less interesting stuff, and then they'll come together to be able to do a tour and then finish with ice cream. We have our Play Day on Friday, June 7. I am sorry to hear Dr. Gasparino will not be doing any Shake It Off. That's what I heard, but...
They said you don't have to do it. I mean, you could if you really wanted to, but I think we're good. So I was like, okay. I think it's the end of an era.
It is. It is. But you know what? I think I can get you back. I think I can get you back on the lineup.
Thanks, Matt.
So we have that Friday, June 7, or Monday, if it is raining, but it does not rain on Play Day, so I'll save it there. Our second grade celebration, this is the second annual put on by our amazing two music teachers, will be Wednesday, the 12th at 6:00 PM in our backfields. We also have a rain date for that. We're not going to talk about that either. We're going to, we're going to keep it all, all out there. We have new student screenings Friday, the 14th through Thursday, the 20th. We are doing Flag Day assemblies, hopefully again, out on the bus circle to honor the flag on the 14th. Our family picnic is Friday, June 21st as kind of a wrapping up of the year. That will be during student lunches. If you haven't filled out your order form, please fill it out and get it back to us. Again, another, oh, I see some, Council Rock parents, wait. So those came home in envelopes, but if you don't have the envelope, you can send it back to us. You can also purchase the day of. It just helps us to plan a little bit. And then our last day of school is Monday, the 24th. So lots to pack in and celebration as we wrap up the year.
Outstanding.
Awesome.
Questions for Mr. Tappin?
Looks great. Great.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hall? I'm sorry. Principal Tappin, also thanks to you and your staff for what you had to go through today with the power outage and all, and to all the whole team. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
All right. Well, I'll just ditto everything Danielle said about today. And the three of us were on a loop with, it was actually Colleen who was wondering what it was like to have power still and your computers. And she was just loving life over at French Road. But yes, everybody really stepped up. Our emergency response team, our counselors, administrators, Teresa, Mosher, and the kids were fantastic. They were also asking what time the power was going to go on and when Dr. McGowan's going to send us home. I said, well, we'll see.
It was not the 10th of never.
And we got the whole day, and it was kind of a unique experience. So there we go. So I have a couple of special guests who will help me right at the end of the presentation, so I'm going to try to fly through what I have at the beginning, although it's all very important. I want to get to our wonderful students and Counselor, Ms. Ali Giuliano. So Spring Fest, we've had Spring Fest in Brighton for decades and decades, and I've been a part of them for over 20, almost 28 years now. And I will say that this is one of the best ones since COVID by far. And we have a new, you know, sometimes you have those breaks and you break some traditions, and then you start new traditions. And this exec council, the new advisors, Mark Lincoln, the AP overseeing student activities, really put together a fantastic day of events, a student faculty talent show, which we've never had, joining faculty and students. And Shake It Off is always welcome. If we, maybe we could do a routine together?
Now we're talking.
Okay. I think that would be fantastic. Just all around, a lot of fun, excitement, and they brought in some new traditions. Their advertising was probably the best I've ever seen. They had the, we had a theme week of dress days. They had a QR code that you could sign up for the student faculty talent show. They had other QR codes for the different competitive club competitions they had. And then they had a beautiful schedule, all ready to go. Also, on this day, we elect our class officers in the 9th, 10th, and 11th grade for the following year. So all, just thought this was, pretty humorous for the high school right there, Mr. Tappin. I just thought it was great. Don't be a fart smeller. Be a smart fellow and vote for Ella. I don't know if Ella won, but I thought she, that was pretty good. It certainly caught my attention. But some really classic posters that I think will just, you know, live the test of time as we move through those class elections. And thanks to Dan Goldman. I was too busy enjoying myself to take pictures. Matt took plenty. This was one of the faculty acts, and Matt Como, if you know Matt, he was actually singing Shake It Off Baby now, singing it, screaming it into the microphone, playing with several of our faculty members. It was quite a sight to see.
We may have gotten footage of that, Dr. Hall.
Nice. It was, it was really great. We had students get together with their German teacher to do some German folk songs and sing in German, which was fantastic. Never in a Spring Fest had that happen. That picture, Dan, was gorgeous. And this was just the beginning. It got really busy out where the club booths are. We had people from the Brighton wardrobe bring over clothes. Kids were shopping right there on the back of the field and just enjoying themselves. Clubs raised money from various things that they sold. Paint, makeup, putting henna. Our different ethnic and religious clubs put together all sorts of, and cultural clubs put together food, excitement, and again, raising a little money for their... money for their sports. And then we ended the day with a pep rally outside, which is also a new twist for Spring Fest. And for the first ever, I'll give Dr. Glazer a shout out. We had a rock, paper, scissors contest during the week on Wednesday in the finals. Everybody had a little necklace to wear and you rock, paper, scissors once and if you lost, you had to give it up. So we had the finals in that corner picture for the students who were there winning rock, paper, scissors. And there was, I mean, the necklace was probably this thick. You had every, every necklace from the school, so fantastic day. Our cleanup day, another great success, clean sweep. We're out there picking up trash and all sorts of things around the Brighton campus and they had a lot of fun. Our whale watch continues after, again, many, many decades. These are the chaperones who gave up their weekend to be with about 89th and 10th grade students out in the Atlantic, right off the coast of Cape Cod, heading down to the boats, sitting on the boat, heading out to the whale watch. They do a lot of things on the whale watch, but that's like the main excitement. Of course, it's called the whale watch. Dr. McGowan, we get that. Anybody know what that's called? If I had a piece of candy, I'd throw it to you.
Eddie.
Do you know? It's a feeding behavior that baleen whales, bubble netting. So they're blowing bubbles. So these humpback whales are blowing bubbles up through the water as a team, as a family. So all these bubbles are coming up through and it's trapping all the krill and the fish, the krill and the little sand lance fish. And at the very top, they chase the fish all the way up and then boom, they explode out of the water.
Yeah.
Sometimes a seagull gets trapped, but they spit it out. They can't actually swallow them. And just an amazing picture, you could probably fit about 10 people like a hot tub in their mouth when it's full of water and fish. And then they close their mouths and they spit out all the water and keep the fish. Pretty cool.
I'm just wondering if the board would like to guess which one of our principals was a high school biologist.
This is amazing.
Enjoy our celebration. Here's it starting to close again. So if you ever want to go and chaperone, I'm sure they'd love to have you, but the whales were quite impressive, they always are. The Red Cross Blood Drive happened on May 11th. Again, they had some record donations, 43 units collected, 129 lives impacted, and they are three units over their goal. And because of their three drives this year, apparently we won some sort of award by affecting almost 500, over 560 lives. They gave $1,000 to a senior who's in the Red Cross Club and they'll be announced at the senior awards ceremony for service to the community. We had our senior decision day. Again, all things are celebrated, college careers, trades, military, gap years, and more. Thanks to the counselors for planning this day, the seniors had a lot of fun. Of course, we started out with a beautiful banquet table of donuts and all the kids got to come. They had to take their senior survey. They got to put right out a card of where they're going or what outfit they're heading into. That was where it was happening up in the front foyer. Usually it's hidden in a room somewhere. We decided to make it fancy for everybody. You get a picture of the Bruin and then they hung up all of their decisions on the wall. The highlight of our night, the Council Rock and BHS mentoring program. Ms. Giuliano, would you like to come up and introduce our wonderful student leaders?
No.
And I'll turn it over to you. So you can just go down, down.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, I'm Holly Likely Giuliano, I'm one of the school counselors at Brighton High School. And I have Rose and Maya with me. They're going to do their own little thing in just a second. The mentoring program at Brighton High School, it's a partnership with Council Rock and a brief history. This was started, I think, 2012, my memory is a little shaky on this, 12 or 13, when Marshall O'Brien was here, I was still at the high school at that time. Mentoring started, I went down to Council Rock a couple of years later and we really had a pretty robust program there for a handful of years. Took a little time off when there was a transition between buildings and counselors. Then we ran into some transportation issues. Then we ran into some COVID issues and this year we were back. So really, really happy to come back. It piloted a little bit smaller this year to make sure we had things up and running. But we, we had a great, great year. So what this looks like, it's a classroom mentoring program, it's not individual mentors. So we had several students that were partnered with different classes. Five students started, we started about November, so we basically ran the second quarter and then we had two folks that finished off the third quarter and we wrapped that up just before AP exams in early May. Activities included helping in art classes, music classes, we helped on the playground. There was some in-class instruction with math and ELA. I'll let these guys speak a little bit more to some of those details. And a special thank you to several teachers. I don't know if I should be reading all of this, but all these folks, I'm pretty sure that's everyone I had. Some counselors helped out, did some social emotional learning lessons as well, but we really had a great experience. We're looking forward to coming back next year and maybe if transportation can get ironed out, maybe we'll be able to grow the program. As it was, I'm really lucky that we had, the counselors essentially volunteered every week to drive the kids. They stayed at Council Rock with one of the vans and brought everyone back, so. With that said, I'm going to roll it over to you guys to introduce yourselves and go from there.
I guess I'll speak first. I'm Rose Swatek. I'm a senior at Brighton High School. I've gone to Brighton my entire life from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade. Next year, I'm going to the U of R for psychology and I'm in the grade program, which is an accelerated degree program to get my masters in education. And I'm hoping to go into education and maybe, maybe child psychology, but that's a maybe. But I think this program, well, let me start with what I did. I went into Ms. Quail's classroom once a week and there was either an SEL lesson, math lesson, or an English lesson going on. And I just listened and I helped the kids and there were a lot of very special moments throughout the months that I was there, from the first time one of them gave me a hug to the first time one of them asked me how to spell a word. But I think the most important moment to me was on the last day, there were a couple kids that I had gotten to know really well and there were a couple kids that I, then there were some kids that I hadn't really spoken to, like at all, just from how we were grouped up and where I ended up sitting and stuff. But on the last day, there was this one girl, one girl who I really hadn't spoken to and she came up to me and she gave me a hug and she gave me a little card that said, I love you. And I was like, oh, hi, sweetie, it's like, thank you. And she was like, you were so nice and I really loved you being here. And it was very heartwarming to me to see the impact I could have on these kids, even when I really didn't like, even if I didn't feel like I had made that big of an impact. And I think that's really good, both for high school students like me who are kind of just looking for something to hold on to and something to make us feel like we're important. And I think it's also really good for the young kids to have as many people in their lives to support them and just to have like a big kid to look up to. And yeah, so that was just a really important moment to me and this program was probably one of the highlights of my senior year, so it's just really important to me and I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Maya Torres Panzer, I'm a junior. I have been in the district since second grade and then I have three siblings who have all come after me. And so it was really cool to kind of go back, see the new renovations. And I was with Mrs. Much's class, who's a second grade class, and I was with them through their recess and then the start of their art class with Ms. Jordan. And like Rose, I'm also interested in psychology, so it was really interesting to kind of observe a class and like how, like the teachers like interact with the students and how they like instruct, because when I was there, I wasn't really paying attention to that side of it. And yeah, I thought it was a really great experience. I made a lot of connections with the kids, like playing with them during recess. I remember one day we were in indoor recess and these boys had made up their own card game with like, they drew little pictures on the cards and more kids came over and they wanted to play. And so I was like, let's make more cards so everyone can play. And I helped them like draw other pictures. I had to come up with a bunch of emojis to draw for each card. And yeah, and then today I went to the Red Wings game to see my brother sing and I saw a couple of the students there and I said hi to them. And so it was really cool to see like, then I have like a bunch of like new familiar faces around Brighton to say hi, even if it's not in the classroom setting, that they, they recognized me and I recognized them.
Thank you both for sharing your stories.
We're looking forward to play day. I think Rose will be there, Maya unfortunately won't be there because she has to go to Nationals for crew.
Well, we're looking forward to it, aren't we, again?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I'm just so proud of them. And thank you, Holly, and the counseling team for doing the driving and giving up so much time to help organize this with the Council Rock staff and, you know, these partnerships and the ability for our older students to work with the younger students. I mean, to be with Maya and Rose is quite an awesome thing and they're right here in our own home. And we're hoping, you know, in the future with Brighton believes day and some other opportunities to bring kids more often to our schools and work together. So I gave you a little taste of what we're focusing on in the next school year as we get ready for the end of the year and Brighton Blueprint Days, but you can take a look at that at your leisure. Cell phones will definitely be on the top of something. We're going to revisit our current policy and look to push it a little bit further. And of course, our graduation class 24 will be on June 27th o'clock on the turf. Rain date is June 21st at 5:00. Hopefully we don't need that and the weather will be wonderful. So lots of end of year things happening. Bye, thank you. Any questions?
No, just a lot going on in all the schools. We appreciate taking the time and we love hearing from students, so that was great. Thank you very much. Just two quick points on behalf of the board, to the principals, and I'm sorry, Colleen's not here. It takes some effort on your part certainly to put together these reports and then to be here and do those. We greatly appreciate the time you take. It does help us keep informed with what's going on, so thank you all for all the efforts you put into that. We greatly appreciate it. In short term memory being what it is, I forget my second thing, so on we go. Thank you all. Oh, I know what it was. All of these are obviously online for anybody who's not able to attend. They can see all of these reports, as I said, there's a lot of effort put into these and there's a lot of great information. Next up, we have approval of the 2024-2025 Board of Education meetings. I'll pause for just a second and say congratulations to Esther and Christina for winning the election. We are grateful that you chose to serve again and happy to have you back on the team, so thank you. This, you've had a chance, excuse me, you've had a chance to review the dates. There was adjustment based on the timing for a budget hearing. Any questions with regards to next year's dates? Motion to approve the 2024-2025 Board of Education meeting calendar.
So moved?
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Eleanor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have bids. This is standard operating procedure. We get together through BOCs and with other school districts to maximize our buying power. We have bids for the following. Natural gas supply for produce, for ice cream and frozen desserts, milk and juice, beverage supply and fresh bread supply. I know Lou always takes special notice with C, ice cream and frozen desserts, and we appreciate the diligence and intention there.
Sample everyone.
Motion to approve the cooperative bids for these items.
Still moved.
Moved by Esther?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have approval for the second read policies. As we addressed before at the first read, these are all being updated to conform to either updated laws, regulations, or best practices, or all of the above. I'll read each policy and policy number and then I'll ask after I've read all three if there are any comments or edits. First is policy 5674, non-instructional business, data networks and security access. Next is policy 6121, personnel, sexual harassment in the workplace. And finally, policy 5677, non-instructional business, privacy and security for student and staff data, computer control for financial network and systems. Any questions with regards to any of those three policies? Kim, I want to confirm with you, we can approve them all at once, correct? Motion to approve all three policies as described.
Still moved?
Moved by Eleanor?
Second.
Seconded by Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we have the consent agenda. We have a bunch, a girls' soccer booster club, good for them, they're going to be out and active come fall. We've got plenty of opportunities to eat and get your car cleaned, which is always good. And then we've got class of 2025, Friends of the Arts in Brighton, class of 2026. So a ton of opportunities with the dates here. Also acknowledge gifts, and we do read those each. First, a gift in the amount of $600 from Susan Miller for the, for the Dennis Miller Scholarship Fund. A gift in the amount of $250 from the Brighton Education Fund requested by English teacher Emily Trowbridge for an honorarium for one of the speakers at a program on May 17th for the entire ninth grade class about To Kill a Mockingbird. And then finally, a gift in the amount of $2,000 from the Brighton Education Fund requested by Dr. Tom Hall for honorariums for an assembly where three BHS graduates who have built careers as professors, published scholars, and writers will speak to ELA 12th grade students, trapezoid student staff, crossroad student staff, Galacy student staff, and select nine to 11 ELA classes. Any questions with regards to those activities or gifts? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved?
Moved by Karen?
Second.
Seconded by Esther? All those in favor?
Aye.
Dr. McGowan, any comments before we adjourn?
You know, we've talked quite a bit about it tonight. You've commented, the principals commented on the craziness of the day, all things out of our control. What is in our control is how we approach those things and the way that our staff members come to the table all the time, but especially when needed. And you can control your response, even if you can't control the variables that are presented to you. And boy, do they respond really, really well in so many different ways. We're creatures of habit and routine. We function on schedules and calendars and, you know, everything is done by a bell, everything is done by, you go here at this time. And none of that was possible in three of the four buildings today and yet people did really, really well and ultimately created a safe experience for our kids from the time that it happened to the time they crossed with a lot of help from school staff in addition to town staff. So really just proud of their work, their response for food service to our buildings and ground staff, to our teaching staff, non-instructional staff, support staff, everybody did really an incredible job. And their leaders led and were pretty fantastic at that as well, so thank you.
It wouldn't be a meeting over the last couple of months if we didn't do something to honor Dr. Lee. So I would like to honor Dr. Lee for earning a Level One Board Achievement Award under the NISBA Board Excellence Recognition Program. At this level, you qualify for this certificate of recognition. Program is designed to acknowledge school board members who strive to continually expand their governance, knowledge, and skills. It is comprised of four achievement levels, for which you have achieved Level One, that are reached by accumulating points for participating in NISBA training, workshops, events, and activities, as well as for taking on board-related roles. For that, and you can put a focus on this bill, Christina gets an achievement award from, like, yeah.
Congratulations. Dr. Lee, go down there.
I should have known this was coming.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. There's the letter. I interrupted it.
All right.
With that, and thanks to Bill and Mike who were working a little shorthanded on the tech group, we thank you for your work and as always, Kim, for all the work behind the scenes to get our agendas in advance and all those things. We thank them. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.